Following the presentation, board members need to determine whether or not they wish to explore moving forward with the litigation. If that is the case, then it would be brought forth for school board approval at an advertised and open-to-the-public meeting. Pam, roll call please.
Ms. McDougal?
Present.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Mullins, would you like to take a minute to acknowledge our students that are here today?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Deskovic. Good afternoon. It's really my tremendous pleasure to introduce some young men and women who have really taken serious their leadership as students and using their student voice to make a difference in our community. With us this afternoon are several of our high schools' student government association, either presidents, vice presidents, or other representatives, but I meet with them regularly after hours, after all of their busy day, and in between of their busy schedules, and we really tackle some of the issues that are at hand that they're experiencing in their schools. And you may, the board may recall, last year, student government representatives took upon themselves wanting to use their voice to go to Tallahassee and communicate to our legislators that they were feeling the real impacts and effects of vaping in their schools and the culture it was creating, as well as seeing the harmful effects to their peers. And they did a fantastic job of representing Brevard up in Tallahassee, and as I met with now this year's student government leaders, they again have taken up vaping as a priority and make increasing awareness, finding ways to educate their peers, our community, on the harmful effects of vaping. So they have a personal interest in the conversation today as well. If I may, because some of their family members, maybe mom is out there DVR-ing or watching the meeting today, I'm gonna call them out and have them stand and just say, give a wave, as well as to their friends back at their schools. So Astronaut High School, Josiah Johnson, there he is. Nina Tran from Cocoa Beach, junior/senior, she's in the back. Cade Ose from O'Gally High School. Ashley Copeland from Edgewood Junior/Senior High. Brianna Proper from Heritage High. Calvin McDonald from Melbourne High School. Trinity Stenger from Merritt Island High. Sadani Blackwood from Palm Bay Magnet High. And Ava Rhodes from Rockledge High School. Max Shimon from Satellite High. Max, did I get your last name right? All right. Juliana Malek from Space Coast. Is it, did I get it right? Malak. Yeah, I, after, I got it. Okay. Matt Siloff, I didn't get that right, did I?
Seeloff.
Siloff, thanks, Matt. Vieira High School. And Lena Hatter from Westshore. There's Lena in the back. All right. Thank you again, guys, for being here.
Yes, the board would also like to thank you all for being here and for being such great advocates. Now, we'd like to turn the time over to Mr. Mayor, which I don't know which one you are.
Actually, it's Mr. Sharpentier.
Mr., say that again?
Sharpentier.
Sharpentier?
Yes, of Titusville High, 1973.
Oh.
I can represent them today, too, have a dual role here.
Okay. Do you work with Mr.? I don't know why my paper says Mr. Mayor, so do you?
There's a number of firms working together on this.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor may have made it on the agenda. I didn't see that, so I'll explain it to you.
Is he here today, or no?
He's right here.
Okay, but you're not the one giving the presentation?
We're gonna have to.
Are you guys gonna duel it out on who's gonna give the presentation?
Well, we were gonna enterprise and work together.
Okay, that's how we like to do things around here.
We're gonna duel with Juul.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. The time is now yours, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Again, my name is Steve Sharpentier, and good afternoon, and I am, truthfully, a Titusville High graduate and a product of this school system, so I'm really thrilled to be here today.
Mr. Sharpentier, can you pull the microphone a little bit closer? There you go.
That's better. Thank you.
It's rare that I get that complaint, that I'm too quiet, but, so again, I'm here today on behalf of a group of attorneys, and they include my firm, Sharpentier Law Firm. I've been a lawyer here in Brevard County since 1981. Again, a product of this school system, including Kokina Elementary School, Jackson Junior High School, Titusville High School, Brevard Community College, all the way up through FSU Law School, and y'all equipped me, this county process, this county school board equipped me to graduate from honors from that law school. So it's a great system you have, and I'm really proud and pleased to be here before you guys today with some other great lawyers, including Kendall Moore, who I don't really need to tell you all a lot about, most of you in here know him. He's also a product of the Brevard County school system. He went to University of Florida, so we have the FSU, the Gators, and the Knowles covered between the two of us through our respective law schools. Next, we have the Steve Mayor from the Mayor Law Firm, and Steve, if you'd stand, please. And Steve and I have worked together representing the county in the past, Brevard County, on a contingency fee basis in a civil case with much success. We are presently involved, along with the Wagstaff Cart Mail Firm, which I'll introduce their representative in a moment, representing the county in the opioid cases. So this isn't the first rodeo for us, and we have a lot of experience in that and working with them. Steve Mayor's firm, his father Mike Mayor was one of the lead counsel in the tobacco case, the tobacco Medicaid case, on behalf of the state of Florida. Again, a lot of experience in these types of cases. And we also have today John Kiefer with Wagstaff Cart Mail from Kansas City, Missouri. You're going, why is somebody from Kansas City, Missouri, down here in Vieira, Florida today? His firm has taken the lead in the Juul cases, and they have already filed, I believe, 12 cases on behalf of school boards throughout the country, with 16 lined up to go within the next couple of weeks. So we're equipped in our team with a firm that has a lot of on-the-ground experience, and we won't hit the ground running, we're already running. So those are some things I wanted to tell you about. I've represented the sheriff's office in the past as part of my practice, Wayne Ivies, Rain, a sheriff dealing with Port Canaveral, integrating the sheriff's office with Port Canaveral, and some other government work I've done. Really, that's the team we have, and what I'd like to do is give John a chance to give you the nuts and bolts about why we're here, and the obvious question of, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we seeking a civil remedy for this government wrong? Why is this the forum to bring this action, and how is it brought? And what are the damages and what we can do to help you determine the damages with as little insult to your day-to-day operations, as little insult to your budget of doing what you do every day for students as we go through the process? We're gonna be sensitive to that as well. John, I'm gonna turn it over to you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us a chance to visit with you about this today. As Steve said, Steve Mayor and his firm are really leading our efforts here in the state of Florida. We've partnered with the mayor firm on other litigation over the last 15 years or so, and they're really spearheading our efforts. My firm is the one that is kind of leading this litigation nationally in partnership with certain strategic law firm partners that we have aligned with in different states or jurisdictions. So here in Florida, it's the mayor firm. Let me say, before I get into the meat of the material.
Can I have you pause for just one second?
Sure.
We don't have access to what's on the screens over there, and so we're trying to figure out a way to, if you're gonna move through some data, we're gonna wanna be able to reference that.
Absolutely.
Who has, who, who has that file within?
You guys have a hard copy?
Ms. Escobar?
We can print.
Do you have a copy of that file you could?
Or take it off of his thumb drive.
Only if we're feeding live.
You can take it off his thumb drive, too. He's got it plugged in.
Does everyone have their own laptops? If they emailed it to us, we could pull it up?
I can get it from the office.
Or hard copies?
It's on it.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, sir.
Yeah, so I'm happy to continue on while she's copying that, if you'd like.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll improvise. What I was gonna say, you know, this is kind of inherently formal forum, but I try to be as informal as possible. I've done these presentations all over the country the last few months, many in settings very much like this, a lot of them across a small conference table, and I don't mind being interrupted. And so I know if you have questions, I'm confident that you will ask them, but don't be shy as we go along about interrupting me if you'd like to. As Steve Sharpentier said, my firm's leading this litigation. We filed the first lawsuits in the country on behalf of school districts against this company, Juul. I'll tell you more about the company and why we are doing what we are doing and what we hope to accomplish here in the next few minutes. We filed the first lawsuits about 45 days ago. As of today, we have a dozen on file. We have 16 more school districts whose boards have voted to move forward with the litigation with us, bringing the total to 28. The remainder of those will likely be filed in the next week to 10 days. And we are on calendar with another 14 school districts to make presentations to their boards for a vote within the next 30 days, bringing the total to a little over 40. Districts in Pennsylvania, New York, Missouri, Kansas, Arizona, Florida, and California have retained us to pursue this litigation for them, and they literally include districts from the, some of the largest to some of the very smallest. I'm sure you're aware, Palm Beach County, Florida, a couple of weeks ago, their board voted to move forward. I anticipate we will likely file that lawsuit later this week. They are the largest so far. In Arizona, we have two or three of the largest in the state, same in Missouri, and in Kansas, we also represent some rural schools. The vaping problem that we'll talk more about, that I know you all and the students that are here are very well acquainted with, certainly appears to have crossed all geographic, demographic, and socioeconomic lines. I hear the, some of the very same stories from superintendents and board members in central and rural Kansas, as I've heard in Tucson, Arizona, and as I've heard in Palm Beach County, Arizona. The, so that's kind of a snapshot of the litigation. Let me tell you, and I'll go through some of the material that is in the PowerPoint, and when that comes back, maybe I'll draw your attention to the highlights. I think it's no secret by now that youth vaping is an epidemic in the United States. It's been so declared by the U.S. Surgeon General and two former heads of the Food and Drug Administration. I think depending on your age, if you are not a teenager, which I'm obviously not, you're not sure kind of where this, calling it an epidemic is not hyperbole, it's not my words, it's the Surgeon General's words. Folks are not necessarily sure where this epidemic came from, and there's sort of this sense that it happened by accident, it happened by chance.
Excuse me, can you give me your flash drive, please?
Sure.
I'll send it to you. I'm gonna send it to you by email.
Okay. It's the top one, it says Mayor at the end of it.
Ms. Escobar, are you gonna copy it, or no?
I'm copying it, but it's gonna take a while. It's a very big document, I'm gonna send it to you by email.
Thank you.
The, this epidemic didn't happen by accident, and it didn't happen by chance. It happened, frankly, as a matter of very deliberate corporate strategy implemented by one company that many of you may have heard of a year or so ago. I hadn't heard of them, a company by the name of Juul. Juul has about 75 to 80 percent of the electronic cigarette market in the United States today. They, the Juul product is the, has been shown to be the product of choice in terms of initiation of most teenagers to vaping and e-cigarettes, and although there are other products out there today, Juul continues to be the predominant leader in the market. To give you some context for how this epidemic came about and why it is we're targeting Juul, I need to tell you a little bit about the company, if I can. And, you know, electronic cigarettes had their genesis, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, depending on whose data you wanna believe. And you've probably all seen non-Juul, older-style electronic cigarettes. There's nothing very cool or glamorous about them. A lot of them are kind of big tanks, they got a hose on them, they look like the kind of thing I light my barbecue grill with. Juul, in the parlance of Silicon Valley people, was a market disruptor. The backstory on the company is fascinating and disturbing. The two founders, a guy named Monses and a guy named Adam Bowen, both had advanced science degrees, I think they were both physicists, and they met at the Stanford University Graduate School of Product Design, and that's where Apple gets designers for its iPhone and its sleek devices and all that stuff. They were both smokers, and as the story goes, they partnered up on their graduate thesis, and they decided they wanted to, their mission was to disrupt the electronic cigarette industry with a revolutionary product, and they set out, in their own words, to create what they called the iPhone of vapes. We know this because when they were doing roadshows, raising venture capital to launch the company, they were very public about all this. And they succeeded mightily at that task. If you've seen a Juul device, it's small, it's surreptitious, it's sleek, it's, you know, graphite gray, it looks like a USB drive, it lights up when you take a drag on it. There's actually something on it called "party mode," where you can actually make the lights on the end of it blink like a strobe light and wave it through this vapor cloud. Some would argue, and I'm one of those who would argue that, a product feature inherently designed to appeal to kids. The other thing that I think is important to know about the founders of this company, and if I rewind the clock for a moment to give you some further context, in the 1990s there was historic litigation brought by 45 states against the five major tobacco companies. Mr. Mayor's firm and his father, Mike Mayor, actually led that, not just for the state of Florida, but nationwide. The first trial in the country against Big Tobacco was set in Palm Beach County, and Mike Mayor was the lead of the trial team in that. All that litigation ultimately settled, and several things came about as a result of that settlement. One thing that came about was a $200 billion fund of money to do things like raise public awareness about the dangers of smoking. A second one, and this all is going to be relevant to the Juul epidemic and the litigation that we have filed. The second major accomplishment from the Big Tobacco litigation was the major tobacco companies agreed to subject themselves to unprecedented restrictions on their ability to market to youth. So no more Joe Camel campaign and all of those sorts of things. The third thing that came about, which is particularly relevant to the Juul conversation, is that millions of pages of historic tobacco company internal documents that had been secret were made public through a project called the Truth Initiative. Any one of us, if we wanted to log on to the Truth Initiative repository and look at those documents, could do that. And those included things like marketing plans from the 1950s and 60s and 70s whereby the tobacco companies targeted youth, and they included a lot of information about the science of nicotine addiction. Well, to return to the Juul conversation, the two, Monses and Bowen, the two founders of Juul, actually mined that historic database, and we know that, number one, because they said they did it when they were raising capital to launch their company. They said, this is amazing, we were able to catch up to, were able to catch up to a mature industry in a short period of time because of all this now publicly available information. But we know specifically what they studied, because since it's in an electronic repository, anybody that logs on leaves a digital footprint. They studied in particular Big Tobacco's historic marketing plans to sell cigarettes to youth, and they studied in particular the science of nicotine addiction. And so when they launched Juul, and if we get the PowerPoint up, I will show it to you. This is the thing that is usually the attention-getter for most people. When they launched Juul, they did it in an inherently aggressive, youth-centric way. They rented out all the big digital billboards on Times Square in New York to advertise the product. They had very young models. They had launch parties in major cities all across America, New York, Los Angeles, San Francisco. They hired celebrities to come to those launch parties, they hired paid models, they hired social media influencers. They gave the product away for free, they encouraged these young people to use it, to take selfies, to post it on the internet under the hashtag Juul. They were, and it's been well documented by others, including a subcommittee of Congress this summer, they were unbelievably sophisticated in their social media marketing efforts. Keep in mind, this is a Silicon Valley firm, and they knew how to use the social media platform. Juul has been called one of the most successful Silicon Valley startups of the last 10 years. Their last officially-reported public financials in the la, they launched in 2015, so just four years ago. Their last, I think, publicly-disclosed financial statements in the last six months, the company had a market capitalization of $38 billion, and less than a year ago, in December of 2018, a company by the name of Altria, which is the parent company of Philip Morris Tobacco, paid $13 billion for a 30, or 35 percent stake in Juul. So you may be able to see where this is going. Juul's longtime CEO was replaced about six weeks ago by a 25-year tobacco industry veteran and the gentleman who managed the Marlboro brand for a couple of decades. So again, you can probably kind of see where this is going. Again, if we get the PowerPoint up, I can show you examples of the social media marketing.
Just to let you know, it's attached to the presentation now, if you guys wanna pull it up from the agenda.
Let me, see if I can.
On the agenda.
There we go. See if I can get the clicker right. Okay, let me back up and give you a little bit more context before we kind of look at the marketing. I think this is a chilling statistic. There's a lot of statistics in the press, but this one in particular, I can't get out of my mind. In the 40-year period from 1976 to 2016, use of traditional cigarettes by teenagers went from 30 percent, or about 1 in 3 high schoolers in 1976, to about 3 percent in 2016. That's absolutely a positive development. That is a vector moving in the right direction, and that did not happen by accident. That happened as a direct result of, for example, some of the reforms that came about as a result of the Big Tobacco litigation of 20 years ago. No more marketing of cigarettes to youth and aggressive public education campaigns that we still see on television today, the very graphic ones of sick smokers. So that trend line is moving in the right direction. Unfortunately, in the last four years' time, all that good work has largely been undone. Depending on whose statistics you read, today, anywhere from 25 to 40 percent of high school students report vaping. The most recent numbers out of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are that in the one-year period of time from 2017 to 2018, usage of these products among high school students increased 78 percent. Usage of these products among middle-school students increased 48 percent. The data also indicates that within six months of beginning a regular vaping habit, at least 30 percent of teenagers will start using in some form traditional tobacco products, and the data is also quite well-developed that vaping and e-cigarettes are a gateway to other drugs, and we are seeing that virtually every day now in the news reports of vaping of illicit products like THC. Currently, it's estimated that almost 5 million U.S. teenagers vape, and about a million and a half have been added in the last year to 18 months. So that's kind of the context. Let me see, let me keep my clicker going the right way here. I mentioned two former heads of the FDA, Scott Gottlieb, who resigned earlier this year, and David Kessler, who presided over the FDA in the 1990s when the Big Tobacco Settlement went through. They've called this an addiction crisis, and both of them have laid primary responsibility for this at the feet of Juul. In fact, David Kessler, who helped develop some of the new regulatory restrictions on traditional tobacco companies, has written in the New York Times that if Juul were a traditional, what's called a combustible cigarette company, all of its youth-centric advertising would be patently illegal under federal law. The only reason it's not been deemed illegal was because this was an oddball hybrid electronic device that the FDA didn't see coming, just like parents didn't see it coming, and just like school districts didn't see it coming. Let me scroll through a couple of these slides, I've talked about some of them. Kevin Burns, the former CEO of Juul, has actually admitted, and as somebody who has tried cases against and taken the depositions of corporate CEOs, it's rare you get a CEO admitting fault. This is an extraordinary admission that Juul is partially responsible for the youth vaping crisis because they own 80 percent of the market. I would add, Mr. Burns did not make this admission as part of a, an epiphany. It was in testimony before Congress where they were essentially pleading that their product be allowed to remain on the market. Mr. Burns, as I mentioned, has been replaced quite recently by a 25-year tobacco industry veteran. This is the launch stuff that I mentioned, I won't spend a lot of time on it. Launch parties they held in cities all over the country where the product was given away for free, social media influencers, celebrities. If you look at the kinds of models and graphics, it's virtually impossible to conclude that Juul did anything but target youth. What is perhaps the most chilling is if you compare Juul's marketing to traditional tobacco industry marketing. The parallels are unmistakable, particularly as it relates to Marlboro. Same colors, same color scheme in the lower left-hand pane, almost to a T. What's interesting is, right after Juul launched, Marlboro actually sued Juul for trademark infringement, and they said, your device looks too much, our pack of, too much like our pack of Marlboro Reds. Marlboro actually lost that case in the trademark court. The court said, it's not a cigarette, it's an electronic device, and so Marlboro decided, if you can't beat 'em, join 'em, and they paid $13 billion, and they now run the company. Continuing, the upper-right-hand pane of this slide illustrates what I was just talking about, but if you look at some of the themes, the graphics, Marlboro had the "Switch It Up" campaign, Juul has the "Make The Switch" campaign, Big Tobacco normalized cigarette smoking, enjoy a cigarette with your morning coffee, Juul did exactly the same thing. What's the result of that? Well, the result of that is what brings us here today. It's what you, your superintendents, your faculty, and the students that are here are all too well aware of. You can get on the internet and find tens of thousands of images like this, and you can see many of these kids appear to be considerably younger than a lot of the students we have here today. And unfortunately, the ages are going down, and depending on the part of the country and the district, we are hearing more and more anecdotal stories of upperclassmen buying the product, marking it up, selling it to lowerclassmen who in turn mark it up and sell it to middle schoolers. I had a superintendent of the Tucson School District, one of the largest in the state, who was quite angry at the problem, say, you know, they're, not only are they interfering with our educational mission and jeopardizing our students' health, they've turned a lot of them into pushers, and that's kind of their reality. So these are some of the statistics I went through a minute ago. In 20, so the marketing I just showed you was from 2015, 16, 17, and early 18. The Food and Drug Administration kind of woke up, and I say that with a little bit of criticism, not total criticism, because this thing came on literally like a tsunami in terms of Juul's growth. In 2018, the Food and Drug Administration sent warning letters to Juul about its youth-oriented marketing, so it stopped that, and for a time, it had kind of darker ads with older models. And if you read Juul's press releases today, they try to say they're a smoking, say, they're a product, an alternative for older smokers, and they imply it to say for choice. Now, there's no data to support a claim that their electronic cigarettes are safer than a combustible cigarette, so they get as close to saying that as they can without quite saying it. They talk about offering alternatives and choices, and it's for mature smokers, but interestingly enough, none of their earlier marketing talked about any of that. In fact, a lot of their early marketing, you didn't even know the product contained They have now suspended all advertising in the United States. They've said, oh, we didn't cause this problem, it wasn't intentional, we wanna be part of the solution, all those good things, but it doesn't really matter. I mean, the proverbial genie's out of the bottle. This particular slide is several months old, somebody told me recently, the number's now about 650,000 or over 600,000 posts on social media. media under the hashtag Juul. Seven in 10 teenagers report they've been exposed to Juul advertising. As I mentioned, Scott Gottlieb earlier this year laid the blame for this squarely at the feet of Juul. A subcommittee of the US House subpoenaed 50,000 confidential Juul documents, investigated them, held hearings, and this summer issued a report, and concluded that Juul's marketing was patently youth-oriented, and they were primarily responsible for the current addiction crisis. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the mechanics of the device, except to say, a lot of these e-cigarette companies, including Juul, at least want to imply their product is safer than traditional cigarettes. And it's true, things like tar are not present in an electronic cigarette. But there's all sorts of things that are in an e-cig that are not in a traditional tobacco product that we're still finding out about. Artificial flavoring ingredients, not to mention, this is an electronic device full of heavy metals. A crude analogy might be if you lit your iPhone on fire and inhaled the vapor. That's not scientific, that's very imprecise. But there's no data to suggest that inhaling superheated vapor into your lungs that's gone through a heavy metal-laden electronic device is not harmful to your health. The other thing that Juul did that was ingenious but chilling is, I mentioned early on, they studied the Big Tobacco Document Repository on the Science of Nicotine Addiction. And there are some now-famous memos from a particular CEO of, I believe it's RJ Reynolds, from the 1970s, talking about the need to acquire more replacement smokers was his term, because smokers were exiting the market. That's a euphemism for saying, older smokers were dying, and big tobacco needed to recruit younger smokers. So that started a large research initiative in the 1970s for milder, smoother cigarettes. And if you're old enough, or as old as I am, I was in high school in the 80s, you may remember ads for Marlboro Light, smoother, less harsh, all those things. The reason those products were developed is because with a traditional cigarette, if you are what's called tobacco or nicotine naive, let's say you're a 15-year-old who's never lit up a Marlboro before, you may have a very adverse physical reaction. You may cough, you may retch, there may be things that are very unpleasant that cause you to not pick it up again. So big tobacco started engineering kind of light, smoother cigarettes. They did it by means of a patented formulation called nicotine salts. Juul basically ripped that off. They took the nicotine salt concept, they rejiggered it, they got a patent for it. And so if you, in taking, I'll call it a hit, off of a Juul device, doesn't taste bad, in fact, it tastes good, particularly if it's a fruit flavor or mint, doesn't make your breath smell bad like traditional tobacco, doesn't make your clothes smell bad, and they've engineered out kind of the adverse physical reaction. At the same time, the data indicates that one draw off of a Juul e-cigarette contains three to four times the amount of nicotine as a traditional cigarette. So again, if this is a cessation product, as these companies, particularly Juul, would want you to believe today, query why in the world it delivers three to four times the amount of nicotine per hit. When you buy this product, it traditionally comes in what's called a starter kit. So it's a device, and it's a bunch of pods, much like if I went out and bought a Keurig coffee maker. Scientists who studied this have opined that the average teenager can easily become addicted to nicotine before they make it through all of the pods in the starter kit. As I'm sure you know by now, this product, for quite some period of time, had fruit flavors and creme brulee, things like that. Juul has suspended, at least for the time being, its fruit flavors, it still markets, I believe, its mint flavor, and there's no sign that usage of the products has decreased. Problems with teen use, I'm not going to pretend to be a scientist, but I'll say a couple of things about that. Two things are true. One is, the science of nicotine addiction is very well-developed. It's very well-developed from the tobacco industry and tobacco litigation. The science of heavy, heavy, heavy nicotine exposure at these levels to a developing adolescent brain is not terribly well-understood. As you might imagine, it's all of a sudden the focus of all sorts of new scientific efforts. But the universal consensus is, it's not good. You've heard reports in the media, a young man, I think in Michigan last week, had a double lung transplant. We've got kids who've had seizures, we've got kids who've had psychotic episodes, we've had kids who've had strokes. There was one particular report, I won't dwell on these because I want to be respectful of your time, there was one particular report that I don't think maybe got the media attention it should have. About two weeks ago, a young man, a teenager, high school boy, was in a car accident, I think by all accounts, kind of a rear-end fender bender, and he went to the ER because he had kind of a whiplash injury. And they did a CT scan of his back, just to make sure that he didn't have a back injury or a herniated disc. And as what's called an incidental finding, meaning they weren't looking for it, they just saw it, he had a huge inflammatory process going on in his lungs that the doctor said was akin to the early signature, the early signature findings on CT scan of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. What's significant and worrisome about that is, that is a young man who was asymptomatic, who wasn't reporting any problems at all, but who was a heavy vapor and just happened to have a CT scan of his back, and the doctors were able to see that finding in his lungs. Over and above, even if kids don't have a permanent physical injury, the stories of nicotine addiction are very troubling. I had a superintendent in another district in a major city sit in a meeting much like this, it was more informal around a conference table, and at the end of the meeting, she said, "I've got personal experience with this. My 7th grade son is addicted to Juul. We just spent $25,000 on an inpatient rehabilitation program for him, that's how he's spending his 8th grade year. We have means, a lot of people don't. We think we're the educated parents, I'm a superintendent, and this took us by surprise." So the stories of addiction are coming in by the thousands. I don't need to tell you, spend a lot of time telling you how surreptitious this device is. It's easy to hide, it's easy to conceal. Unlike cigarette smoke, the vapor vanishes almost into thin air. Some of the students that are in the audience may have seen some of this stuff firsthand. I haven't, because I'm not in high school restrooms, but I've heard kids are taking hits, blowing it into the toilet bowl, flushing the lever, and because it's a vapor and because of the suction effect, goes right out of the air. It's extremely hard to detect. Okay, so what's the role of schools? Why are we here? Why in the world would a school board want to think about litigation? Look, I'm very familiar with the old analogy that if all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And I am a litigator and a trial lawyer, so that's my hammer. But I'm smart enough to realize, not everything in the world is solved through litigation. Problems often take a multifactorial solution. They take education, they take policymaking and legislation, oftentimes they take litigation. Some of the biggest problems that have faced this, social problems that have faced this country in the past and that confront us today, including opioids, for example, have required all three. All of those take effort and will and money. So why schools? Well, I don't need to tell you that schools are really on the front lines of fighting this epidemic. And again, I'm kind of, I get stuck sometimes on old analogies, so forgive me, but I think schools are kind of the proverbial canary in the coalmine with this problem. And here's what I mean by that. Let me give you two historical analogies that I've mentioned to put this into context. If you think about the big tobacco litigation of the 1990s, before that, starting in the 60s, sick smokers sued big tobacco, family members who'd lost loved ones to smoking-related illness sued big tobacco, there were tens of thousands of those suits around the country. That didn't move the needle, and it didn't cause the big tobacco companies to blink, because they are a Goliath so big that 10,000 Davids aren't going to make them blink. What made them blink was when 45 states joined together and sued them for billions of dollars and said, "You are costing us billions of dollars in Medicaid monies to take care of sick smokers." That moved the needle, it resulted in a historic settlement that funded public education, that drove smoking rates down from 30% to 3%, and prevented big tobacco from advertising traditional cigarettes to kids. If you think about the opioid epidemic that is still much in the news today, exactly the same thing is true. Starting in the 1990s, you know, family members who'd lost loved ones to opioid overdose sued Purdue Pharma and others, and there's been many, many, many of those suits. Some went to trial, a few were successful, many were not. The thing that's moved the needle is when several thousand cities and counties have joined together to sue the pharmaceutical companies, again, for monies they are expending for first responders, to go out and deal with acute overdose, to treat opioid-addicted babies, those sorts of things. Some of that litigation has settled, some of it has not. My firm is involved in that, we represent several hundred cities and counties, and, you know, along with Mr. Mayor's firm, are fortunate enough to represent, so I'm here in the state of Florida. So, schools are really in that same position. State governments really haven't felt much, if any, of the brunt of this yet, and I hope they don't. If this trend continues, and five, or 10, or 20 years from now, we have a whole generation of today's teenagers who now have pulmonary disease and cancer and all sorts of other things, the states may have a claim for things like Medicaid monies. But today, the enterprises that are feeling the immediate toll of this on their mission, on their time, and on their resources are the schools of America, both public and private. It's probably not my place to try to articulate your mission, but it seems to me the mission of most schools in America is to do as best you can, under the circumstances, to safeguard the physical and mental and emotional well-being of students, to give them the best education you can with the resources available, and to equip them to become productive members of society in the next generation. Juul, insofar as I can tell from meetings like this, is an existential threat to that mission. The stories that I have heard are very similar all over the country. Schools are doing many things the same and many things different. Depending on the state and the district, districts are spending money on educational programs aimed at prevention, programs that frankly ought to be starting in the grade schools based on the trend line of this epidemic. They are spending money on what I'll call supervision and monitoring and policing, so reallocation of staff, or hiring additional school resource officers to police bathrooms, to police hallways, in some places to ride school buses. In some places, districts are spending money on specialized vape detectors, because this stuff is hard to detect. Additional closed-circuit TV in terms of technology. In some places, schools are spending money on counseling and treatment. In schools in one state where we represent some districts, if students are suspended for an illicit substance, and that's what all their, all the vaping suspensions are under the way they define it, they foot the bill for a third-party addiction counseling and treatment service to actually come to the school because it's a socio-economically disadvantaged school, a lot of the parents both work, some of them, English isn't their first language, and the kids couldn't even get to treatment. So they bring those resources into the school. I could go on. We're hearing from schools that they are spending additional money in tutoring to trying to keep kids caught up. Certain districts we represent in New York, if they suspend a kid out of school for this, they foot the bill for sending a tutor to the child's home to keep them current in their studying. So, as I say, all the districts that we have talked to seem like they are peddling as fast as they can, doing the best that they can, but they've all said, "We're behind the problem, we're not in front of it," and they're all kind of making it up as they go along because this is an unprecedented epidemic. So the impact on schools, I just went through. So, I guess, I ought to talk a little bit about kind of the social impact of this briefly, and the students know this better than me. I won't take the time to read it to you. This was an article I found from a Phoenix paper, where a middle school principal sat her students down at the beginning of the new school year and kind of did focus groups and said, "What's your biggest concern going into the new school year?" And she thought it would be, you know, "Will I make a sports team, or homework, or friends?" And all of them said, "It's vaping." And this was, this came from a lot of kids who didn't vape. They were concerned about its impact on their friends, they were concerned about being implicated if they were in the bathroom when it was being done. I attended a board meeting in Phoenix where a father spoke very passionately about the fact that in his daughter's high school, they'd had to close 50% of the restrooms because they couldn't control the vaping problem, and his daughter didn't have time to use the restroom between classes and came home in tears over that. So it's got a lot of collateral social impact beyond just kind of the money side of things. So, what's the lawsuit about? Well, the lawsuit, at its core, we have various claims, but the crux of it is what's called a public nuisance claim. That is really the key claim in the big tobacco cases of 20 years ago, it's the key claim in the opioid litigation, and it basically is that Juul deliberately deployed this device and marketed it to teenagers. It created a public health epidemic that is a public nuisance under the law, and Juul is responsible for abating or mitigating the nuisance. So what does that mean? What it means is, we're civil lawyers, we're not criminal lawyers, so we cannot through this litigation send anybody to jail, and sending people to jail isn't going to solve the problem in the public schools. What we can do is try to accomplish a monetary remedy and put together a fund of money to be used for, basically for an abatement plan. And so, what I've heard, I've heard several recurring questions from districts, and let me tell you what they are, because they may be questions for some of you. One of the questions I've heard, in no particular order, is, "We know this is a huge problem in our schools, and we want to do something about it, but what are the damages, or we're not sure if we've quantified those damages, we've been more involved with trying to get in front of the problem." Our response is, "We think this has less to do with what a district has done to this point in time, and the real question is, what's it going to take in the next one, three, five, I hope not more than five years, to bring this problem under control and eliminate it?" If money were no object, and that's never true, there's always limited money, but if money were no object, what would it take to solve the problem? It would take some of the things I discussed a few minutes ago. Educational programs aimed at prevention, resources aimed at surveillance, whether human resources or technology, counseling, treatment, tutorial support. We have, we're working with experts already on, in a number of those fields, because it's our job as lawyers prosecuting this litigation, not to just, you know, prove the folks at Juul did wrong, but to basically show what the remedy needs to be, and to come up with, hopefully, with a fund of money that participating districts can share in on an appropriate basis that would have to be approved by a federal judge, to deploy in all participating districts, strategies aimed at prevention, remediation, and elimination of the problem. So that's one thing we hear. What about, what do we have to show? The answer is, at this point, not very much. We always tell districts, "If you decide to move forward with us and you have information already, we'll take it." So for example, if you've got information that indicates, I mean, we're seeing, you know, 200, 300, 400, 500% increases in disciplines and suspensions related to vaping. A lot of districts don't break it out as traditional tobacco versus an electronic cigarette, but if you talk to folks anecdotally, they tell you, "It's all the vaping devices." On a go-forward basis, we intend to work with our client districts to kind of start tracking that stuff. I mean, we are committed, we know most schools' resources are stretched thin, and so unless a district puts up its hand and says, "I want to be the leader in this, I want to be out front," we believe the resource commitment at the district level to this litigation's going to be minimal. We'd like to have a point of contact for questions. We intend to have some listening sessions with our client districts, which are essentially probably conference calls or in-person meetings, where you all would appoint folks you think might be good for us to hear from, and many could include students, to hear, "What's the problem look like at the ground level? And what's it like in your district? What's being tried? What might be effective? If you had more financial resources, where might you direct them?" And then, as I say, on a go-forward basis, we'll be working with our districts to, you know, capture some data, for example, to differentiate if there's discipline instances, what are vape-related versus traditional tobacco, those sorts of things. Another question we get is, "What's the cost?" We do all this on a pure contingent fee basis. What that means is, we advance all of the litigation expenses, so, you know, the millions of pages of documents we'll get, the depositions we'll take, all those things, we pay all that. Only if there is a net positive recovery for the district do we get our expenses repaid on a pro-rata formulaic basis by all participating districts, and do we get any kind of attorney's fee. And when I say net positive, I mean, net posit-- And when I say net positive, I mean, net positive, the retainer agreements that we've entered into with districts, which we're always happy to have your counsel review with a fine-tooth comb, and propose revisions too, if you like. Those make it clear that if, for some reason, this litigation turns out to be a big, giant flop, and time and experience teaches me, I don't think it will be, but if it does, the districts owe nothing. If there is a positive settlement, all participating districts would share in that, our expenses would get repaid, our fee would get paid, but the districts would walk away with money in hand. It's not a situation where there'd be a global settlement, and we'd tell you, "Two years from now, congratulations, your district gets $100,000, but you owe us $1 million." Doesn't work like that, our agreements spell that out. We've tried to, I won't belabor that point, but we've tried to make the retainer agreements kind of one-sided, tilting in favor of the districts, because we know you have a constituency, we know transparency and accountability is important to you, and so we've tried to structure our agreements in that way. I think the main other question that I've gotten is, kind of, what's the, well, two more questions. What's the risk? What's the risk to districts in doing this? And, look, I'll tell you, I'm biased, so you have to consider the source here. I think there's only one right side of this issue to be on. There's a lot of issues in life where there's shades of gray. I look at this as, it's teenage kids and school districts on one side, and it's big tobacco on the other. And if somebody gets their back up, because a school district wants to take a stand in defense of its mission, and its kids, and its resources, then they can get their back up over that. I think the districts truly have the white hat in this deal, and so I think, from my vantage point, and I can tell you, having done a number of these the last few months, there's a lot of media coverage about every time, and it's almost all been uniformly positive in favor of the district. I think people see this for what it is, and it is districts taking a stand, number one, in defense of their mission, number two, in defense of their kids and their resources. The last question I get sometimes is, "Well, why, you know, why us? Isn't there somebody else that could do this, should do this, ought to be doing this?" That question isn't totally for me to answer. I think, I'm all in favor of anybody that wants to push legislation and those sorts of things, I think that's great. I think you can walk and chew gum at the same time, I think you can fight a fight on multiple fronts. But, as of today, only three state attorneys general around the country have sued Juul, New York, California, and North Carolina. None of them are seeking damages, insofar as I read their complaints. None of them are seeking damages specific to districts of the kind that I have just described. And I don't, in no way, shape, or form am I criticizing the state AGs, but monies state AGs recover, there's a lot of discretion at the state level in terms of where those monies might go. If a school district sues, it's the school district's suit, it's the school district's damages claim, and if there's a monetary recovery, it's the district's, to spend as it wants to spend it. I was told by Steve this morning that, at least in this district, there's a not insignificant portion of the budget that is funded by local property taxes. I don't think that is the kind of money that a state entity would be suing to recover for, so I think a district, in short, is, are the perfect plaintiffs to bring this litigation. As I mentioned, there's a number that we've sued for, a number of others we will be in the next week, within the next 30 days, I think there will be over 40, and I would close by saying, honestly, I think there will be hundreds within three to six months' time. The Arizona School Boards Association has formally passed a resolution in support of this litigation and our litigation, our team, and the National School Boards Association has been very supportive. They're giving us access over the next few months to speaking opportunities, to their membership at national meetings, to podcasts, to educational and engagement opportunities, because they recognize this is a serious, serious crisis within all of their member districts. With that, I'm going to close out my comments, and I guess, take any questions anybody has.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Campbell?
Yeah. So, one of the things that we have talked about, that you mentioned rather, was resources, and you said the cost, financially, there is none to us, but time is a precious resource. And you mentioned, moving forward, that you might ask us to collect data in a different way. I don't think we, I think we've discussed that we do not differentiate between cigarette, tobacco offenses, and vaping tobacco offenses, and I think that's something you're asking for, but because you are specifically suing Juul, is there going to be an ask, potentially, for us to start tracking, not only was it vaping, or was it cigarettes, but was it the dual brand?
Right. That's a great question, and I don't have a specific answer for you. I think your question was framed in terms of, could there be an ask, possibly? I think I heard the word possibly in there. Possibly there could be. I don't know yet. I think there will likely be an ask, and we're happy to collaborate with districts on the easiest way to capture this, on a go-forward basis, how much of it is, for example, a traditional tobacco product versus a vape product? And as to specific brand, we want to talk about that internally among the team, and we want to talk about it with districts, because, again, we want to do this, look, I can't stand here and tell you, you know what, if you hire us, you will never see us for three years, at which time I'll bring you a check, and you won't have to give us any information. We will need information, but we've encountered this in the opioid litigation, with cities and counties whose resources are stretched thin as well. We are very sensitive to that issue, and so we want to keep any burden of, for example, data capture to the absolute minimum. What I don't believe we'll be asking people to do, and I'm not going to put my hand on a Bible and swear to it, but I don't think we will, is asking people to go back and reconstruct for the last several years, what was what? But if, I talked to a district today, another district here in Florida that we're going to be talking to soon, and they indicated they were already in the process of kind of revising their code of conduct to perhaps do some of this differentiation, and kind of invited us to kind of share our thoughts on that. So, you know, I think we want to have a conversation about that. I think we will want to capture some additional information, but again, we want to do it in a non-intrusive way. And let me just, the last thing I'll say is, and pleading ignorance, when a student, for example, might get suspended today for one of these types of infractions, I don't know what kind of piece of paper or papers get filled out, what boxes get checked, but I would hope it would be something, the kind of thing that we're talking about, I would hope would be as simple as, you know, modifying a form, whether a paper or an electronic form, with a few more boxes and maybe a line or two to fill in. I did mention, I call them, excuse me, I call them listening sessions, that's kind of hokey, but I think it's important for every district that we move forward with, for us to have an informed conversation with the stakeholders, and not stand up here and talk like I've been doing, but actually listen and say, okay, and of all the meetings that I've been to, this is the first one, students have been at. I think that's unbelievably cool, because there's, you know, a bunch of adults standing up here talking about students and problems with students, with no students being here is maybe a little unusual, and I didn't realize that until today. But I think, understanding what the problem looks like at the individual district level, because it is different. I talked to a district in Colorado that said, "We think, based on self-report data, we've got the worst problem in the country, based on the percentage of kids anonymously who report they vape." Okay, that's different than other districts. We want to know what the problem looks like here, we want to know how you capture the information, what information you capture, and then if we want to start capturing some additional things, we want to talk about what that might be, how relatively easy it would be, how relatively burdensome it would be, those sorts of things, and have kind of a designated point of contact, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. McDougal?
This question's really for Mr. Cheatham and for Chris Moore, of course. Mr. Cheatham, how, right now, we don't capture, I don't think we capture, I could be wrong, that this was for cigarettes, this was for vaping. Is it an easy fix that we could maybe do that? And I don't know if we need to know if it's a Juul or not. Let me ask the students also. What do you think the percentage is mostly Juuls? Raise the hand if you think it's a Juul, or is it just any vaping thing? Juuls, what do you think? Juuls mostly, or do you know that? Okay, so there's several, okay. So, Mr. Cheatham, is that something that's possible?
That may be more of a Chris question.
Yeah.
So how difficult is it going to be? I mean, I just want to see that going forward, because I'm hearing that going forward, you're not going to really ask us to go backwards, you're asking us to say from, when we, if we should join, that, start collecting data then, if I understood you correctly.
Right, it's just a checkbox, that's all it is.
So here comes Mr. Cheatham.
Here come the heroes.
Yes, possible, but we, you would need to look into it to see what the process looks like for doing that, to make sure the schools can collect it consistently across the district. There's a couple of different pieces of state reporting that goes with it too, so we just need to make sure we're doing it the correct way, but it's possible, yes.
And Chris, I know this affects your department.
Yeah. We would have to change our code of student conduct, because it has all the discipline codes in it, we would have to change the referral form, we would have to add a code into the system, so it's, they're just technical pieces that would have to be put into place, and when you change the code of conduct, it has to go before the board, so it's that timeframe as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Susan?
Dr. Mullins, would it be, would it be appropriate to ask one of our student representatives to come up and give a real quick overview of what they see inside their schools, being that we're asking them? And can I select that kid?
I would defer to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. You have one you want to pick on already?
I was going to ask Matt, or would you come up and explain, from your perspective, what you're seeing inside the schools?
Yeah, sure.
You guys have done a good job so far, so.
So, I know that this is something that, in Brevard County, we worked on a lot last year, where we had different student governments go to host assemblies and different campaigns to raise awareness about vaping, and I think that that sort of worked in decreasing the amount of people that did it last year, but seeing as we have, of course, a whole new board of student government members and just people that are in charge of that now, we don't really, we haven't been doing that same sort of campaigning like we did last year, and as a result, I think I have seen, at least in, I'm from Viera High School, seen the numbers kind of resurge back again. One of the things that I have noticed, though, is I know that with everything that's been going on with Juul, with, I know that there have been numerous lawsuits, and of course, with them lowering the amount of flavors and different types of products that they offer, that I've seen other vaping devices that have come into the forefront, more so than Juul this year. I don't know necessarily what those are, it's just that when I hear of kids getting suspended or getting in trouble for vaping, I don't see it being Juul as much this year as I used to.
Matt, let me ask you, the question that I was asking is, is your impact as far as students inside of our schools, not so much on the Juul, which one, or anything like that?
Okay.
Is there, do you, can you give a perspective, sorry, can you give a perspective of, this is how it's impacting your school? Take aside the company, take aside that, how's it impacting your students?
So, I think that it's, well, it's something that I think last year, just going into the bathrooms, you'd see, every single time I would go into the bathroom, there would be kids vaping, and you'd hear kids every day just coming in, I know that we have our K-9 officers that come to school pretty frequently now, and kids will like come in, talk, like, "Hey, did you see the K-9 officer on campus?" You'll hear gossip around with different students talking about, "Oh, how are we going to get away with not getting caught today," or, "How are we going to be able to hide this so we don't get in trouble?" But I think that that's just a main concern, where kids who are fearful of getting caught, but not as much as they're still addicted and wanting to do it. I know that it's still such a big problem, and it still affects the individual mindsets of a lot of students, where as much as we try to combat it, I still think that students just ignore it, and like we said, I think that I talked with some people over there about students having the mindset of, "Well, I haven't gotten sick or anything because of it, I don't really see these dangers happening to me, so I'm just going to keep doing it." And I think that there's a lot of people at schools that feel that way.
Matt, would you say that it has impacted the overall learning environment of Viera High School in many different aspects?
Yes, I would, of course.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question for?
Not for Matt.
Great Viera High School SGA individual.
But I do want to reach out to a couple of students if I can.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. So I was talking to our students earlier, and I want to ask the Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High and Edgewood Junior Senior High, if one of you would be brave enough to talk about the impact, how this is, you know, you are a school that has middle school students, so does anyone feel comfortable coming up and talking about that? And I am so sorry, is it Nina that I didn't introduce you? I'm so sorry.
It's a guy.
So, would one of you want to come up and talk about the impact as a middle school? Thank you.
So, we are a junior, senior high school, and we have a ton of seventh and eighth graders who are actually friends with a lot of the seniors, and have siblings, or their siblings have friends, and they talk, and they're like, "Hey, you're 18, can you buy me this stuff?" And they're like, "Okay, yeah, sure, as long as you pay me for it," and so they're making profit, like selling these products to the underage people, especially in middle school, and you see it a lot, because recently, like, all the teachers are talking about how that's the main problem, is our middle schoolers, which is pretty rough.
And how is it in the bathrooms for you also? I mean, do you have the same problem that Viera has?
Yes, definitely. There's specific bathrooms where kids like know where to go and where the teachers won't be, and we've started telling the teachers where those spots are, and then they just switch them up again.
Thank you.
Were you part of the team that went to Tallahassee last year?
Yes.
And lobbied? And you asked our legislators to come up with some kind of laws or restrictive measures to control what we're dealing with? To date, do you know of any legislation that has been filed in favor of what you guys lobbied for last year?
I don't think so. I know that we worked really hard, and we tried to, and I think something got approved? Yeah, yes.
Mr. Reed could probably clarify that for us, because he helped lead that effort up in Tallahassee.
Well, our students supported the...
Ms. Reed, would you come to the microphone, because we're recording?
Thank you.
Our students supported the legislature's writing of the laws that took effect this year that apply the indoor smoking restrictions to vaping as well, and I believe that there has been a bill introduced by Senator Debbie Mayfield that would further restrict vaping and the way that it is presented in retail settings, so that would be a next step. It was kind of one of the things that the students brought up, as a next step, to limit underage use of that substance and technology.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Ms. Campbell?
Can I just add on to that? You know, I was able to go with our students, and there were some pretty specific things that we were asking for. One is that they would require the vape companies to put labels on their products, similar to tobacco packages, and then that they would provide, ask them to provide money for education campaigns, and one of the, you know, everybody was really excited to, "Oh, yeah, that's great, I understand," and so many of them were so completely unaware of the epidemic, and of course, it's been more in the nuisance we went. But, we came, probably the most honest presenter, I think Ms. Belford was in the room, one of our representatives said, "Look, this isn't really us, this isn't really a state legislative thing, this is a federal thing." And it was deflating, to be completely honest, we'd had such great feedback all day, and someone came, "You know what, we can't really solve this problem in the state of Florida, because these are products, even if we could say in Florida, you can't sell these things." Well, they could ship them in through Amazon, or whatever. So, I just think it was, that is a path, and I think we continue to look at that, but it can be discouraging to try to reach out to our legislators, because there is only so many things that our state legislators can do in this field, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Lena, I saw you raising your hand back there, did you have something you wanted to contribute? Yeah, I did too. Do you want to come up?
So, I attend Westshore Junior Senior High School, which is also seventh through 12th grade, and I just wanted to add kind of an opposing view to what Ashley said. My little brother's actually in seventh grade, and I have never heard of him, I mean, I suppose he's a good kid, but I've never heard him say anything concerning the topic of vaping, and I just feel personally that the students... And I just feel personally that the students who want to learn and who wanna work hard in their school environments, I personally am not affected by the vaping epidemic, per se. And so, I don't know if it's just me going to Westshore or the students I surround myself with, but I don't think it personally and to my peers distracts them from learning. I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. Ms. Belford?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One, and it kind of goes along with what Miss Campbell was mentioning, in that what our students were really looking for was a change in packaging, as well as a requirement for education about the risks of vaping, which we couldn't really achieve at the state level. So, I'm happy to hear that the lawsuit is working toward providing monetary resources for districts to do those things internally, as far as educating. But do you anticipate, in this process, requiring the companies to fund educational initiatives like we see with the big tobacco outcomes, beyond just what the school districts will be doing?
Yeah, the short answer to that is yes. And to your specific point about changes in packaging and warning labels, I just, I went on for a while, and it, you know, I didn't wanna get too far into the legal weeds. The easiest thing to explain to people is money damages. But we're also seeking what's called injunctive relief. You may have heard of injunctions. So those are things like cease all advertising, you know, to youth-oriented advertising. Well, they would say, well, we've already done that. Well, they've ostensibly done it voluntarily, not, you know, by order of a court or a voluntary settlement. Things like warning labels, packaging changes, all of that is all part and parcel of a claim for injunctive relief, which is a part of this. It's just a little more, takes longer to describe. To your, the second part of your question, yeah, the answer is yes. The only reason I'm hesitating, yes, a huge goal of this litigation is a fund of money to put into education aimed at prevention. That's not the only goal, but that is a huge goal, okay? The only reason I'm hesitating a little bit is, that's the kind of thing that we hire experts to help us develop. And to help us develop, what's it, what does it need to look like? For example, I've got districts in Arizona where a substantial majority of the students, English is not their first language. So, that educational program may need to look a little bit different than in central Kansas. And but, and so, I think we envision something that can be, certainly can be funded through this litigation, that can be customizable and scalable to an individual district's needs. And then the question is, is it ultimately deployed through the district? Is it deployed through a third party? You know, those are details that always get worked out. But it's absolutely a huge goal of this. You know, you can, look, you can, you can buy all the vape detectors and closed-circuit TV cameras in the world, you may stop a few people from doing it, but it's not gonna eliminate the problem. What eliminates the problem are things like education. Restrictions on marketing and sale and education and prevention, so.
So, let me ask my, my question a little more specifically. We have, for example, Tobacco-Free Florida, that does a lot of statewide education initiative.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate something on a state level or national level, as opposed to just education on a district level, coming out of this?
Well, I hope national, state, and local educational initiatives come out of this. I can't, I honestly cannot speak to what would be done at a national level or even a state level, because those are typically, you know, actors, legislatures, regulatory bodies, that I am not a part of, right? But what, so for example, as I say, in the big tobacco litigation, that resulted in a, about a $206 billion settlement. Those were typically states that were suing. But the various prevention and educational initiatives came out of that, some of which were rolled out at the federal level, okay? The mechanics of kinda how the money goes back and forth usually is, is the subject of sort of a big implementation plan after a monetary settlement is reached. But the short answer is, yeah, that's absolutely a goal, and that's, you know, what we hope to achieve. So, we view the starting point as, in any litigation, as who is the party or the parties with the best, largest, and strongest claim for damages? Because that's the leverage, that's how you get money to the table, and money funds solutions. And in our judgment, school districts are the parties in this epidemic with the best and the strongest claim for damages and the most litigation. And if, as I firmly believe, we have hundreds, if not more, districts on board a few months from now, that's gonna be a lot of leverage, I think, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Two additional questions. Should this board decide to move forward and join into the lawsuit? And six months from now, you come to us and say, we need this data. And the district says, we simply do not have the capacity to gather that data. What happens?
Boy, you should be a lawyer with all, that's a good hypothetical. I think the answer is, I don't know, we'd work with you in good faith. And for what it's worth, you know, we're, myself and the other lawyers leading this have decades of experience doing this kind of thing. We solve prob, you know, we don't just walk into court and have Hollywood moments. That's a, sometimes you never have a Hollywood moment in a whole career. An awful lot of this job is working with people and figuring out how to solve complex problems. So, there's not gonna be some penalty. We'll either find a workaround, we'll say, okay, thank you, we'll make do without the data. Worst-case scenario, if you look at this and say, oh, my gosh, it seemed great when we saw that PowerPoint, and now it's a giant headache. The retainer agreement that we have gives you the right to basically withdraw at any time. So, there's, there's a, there's an exit door, should it come to that. We hope it doesn't, it rarely does, but, so.
Thank you, and...
Can I say one more thing on that, too? On the data front, the problem that I heard today is not unique to you all. I mean, I've heard it from a lot of districts, and it is just the nature of the beast. This is a new problem, it's unique, and it came on fast. And so, you've got an older system, which was fine five years ago, but now, all of a sudden, the goalposts moved, right? So, you're not the only one in this boat.
Yes, thank you so very much.
Yep.
Kind of tied in with that, one of the things that you said early on is that you all are absorbing the cost of the litigation.
Yep.
So, in the event that we need to do things to be able to provide data, like reprinting our referral forms or modifying our current software to be able to gather the appropriate data, would you be willing to consider those costs as part of your litigation costs and cover the costs for those things to take place for the district?
Great question. I think the answer is, 'cause I listen to your words very carefully. We would consider it, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and we'd have to look at the scale of it. Let me pause and say, there are, there are certain components, there are certain client litigation costs that lawyers under the ethical rules cannot agree to pick up. So, for example, if I was representing someone in a personal injury case, and they had medical bills that they couldn't pay, I couldn't pay those ethically. I honestly don't know the answer to what you just asked. The first thing I would do is go research, are these the sorts of things that the lawyers could advance if we wanted to and we had the ability to? And if the answer to that was no, then that's the answer we give you. If the answer was yes, you could do it, then we'd have to explore it on a case-by-case basis. I mean, I've paid, you know, when clients travel across country for a trial and sit in a hotel room for two weeks, we pay all that. Now, if you talk about modifying software, and it's a quarter million dollars for your district, and we're representing hundreds of districts, that's probably cost prohibitive. So I guess what I would say is, we're reasonable people, we're collaborative. We recognize that school districts are sophisticated clients. And so, if we got an ask like that, we would take it seriously, we would look into it, and we'd give you, we'd have a discussion, we'd have an honest answer, or we'd give you an honest answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have questions, Ms. Campbell?
We were just recently sent an article about the Juul Corporation and how they've already taken a few hits because of the advertising. So, their bottom line is diminishing. How do you think that is going to affect your case moving forward? If they declare, let's say they declare bankruptcy in the next couple of years, which is a possibility.
Absolutely. So, great question. And I'm, you know, I wish I could give you short answers, I wish I had a crystal ball, but I've been watching that stuff closely as well. I tell you two things. One, if they went into bankruptcy, they wouldn't be, that wouldn't be the first case where we've litigated something through bankruptcy. That's number one. Number two, without, because I do kinda read this stuff and follow this kind of obsessively, Juul's endgame, quite honestly, is to remain on the market. They now have to get FDA approval for their devices. They file papers as the first step in that process next May. The showing they have to make is that their product does more good than harm. That was a new test that came about as a result of the tobacco settlements in the 1990s. So they wanna kind of, they're kind of rebranding themselves as a cessation product. There are skeptics like me that say, I'm not sure they can ever make that showing. But I will tell you, they have a lot of money, and they've hired a lot of well-heeled scientists. And if we put the youth vaping issue to the side, it's not gonna surprise me if in six months, they put scientific papers forward saying, you know what, we can show that for a smoker of a traditional cigarette, this is a less harmful product. I may not believe that science, but I think they'll come up with it. If they stay on the market, they're going to keep printing money. They have said, this is kind of the opposite side of your question. They've said, we wanna be part of the solution. I think in the court of public opinion, they've taken a lot of hits over the youth vaping thing. So I think they are incentivized to try to resolve that problem. So, by extension, I think they are incentivized to resolve cases brought by school districts. To answer your question directly, you're right. $38 billion sounds like a lot of money, unless they stop earning money and they go into bankruptcy. It is certainly not outside the realm of possibility that we will add other defendants as the litigation unfolds. Not only is that not unusual, sometimes it's more the norm than the exception. But at the beginning of a lawsuit like this, we like to be very focused. We like to shoot with a rifle and not a shotgun. We wanna know if we file a lawsuit, we believe, without the benefit of seeing their internal documents and having deposed their executives, we wanna believe we have a strong case we can walk into court and succeed on. So that's why, so far, we've only sued Juul. We may broaden, we may bring others to the, to the table and add them as defendants as the litigation progresses. And obviously, with other defendants, there typically comes other financial resources.
Thank you.
Ms. Belford?
I know you don't have your crystal ball, and so maybe this is one of those questions that would be beneficial to have, but what do you foresee as the length of time that this will be ongoing?
Yeah, that's, that is truly the crystal ball question. Here's what I'd say. This is, this litigation, I don't think I mentioned it. Some people call it a mass tort litigation. You can think of pharmaceuticals, medical devices, opioids as one. The technical legal name is multi-district litigation. What it means is, if you all made a decision to join in this litigation, we filed suit for you, we would file suit in federal court here in Florida. That suit would be transferred to the federal court in the Northern District of California in San Francisco, because there has already been a multi-district litigation established there for all lawsuits against Juul. That is under the supervision of one federal judge. And even though your suit would be your suit, and Palm Beach County is Palm Beach County's, they all get consolidated, and they kinda get worked up en masse, so to speak, with the idea being efficiency within the court system, okay? Experience teaches, these MDL cases virtually always go on for several years. Some go on longer. Now, I will tell you, the opioid litigation was filed, the federal cases, on the most part, were filed less than three years ago. The first trial was set in October. That got postponed because several defendants settled. And that case, I think that case is on a path towards settlement in the near future. That is fast, 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 for a ma, a true mass tort in the federal court system, particularly with all the complexities of the opioid epidemic. So I would say, it would likely be several years. It's hard for me to predict what several means. The only caveat is, I do believe Juul is incentivized to refurbish their reputation in the court of public opinion. And to say, look at all the things we are doing, you know, they're gonna say, we didn't cause this crisis, and folks like me can disagree with that. But I think they are powerfully incentivized to try to, to point to deliverables and say, look at all the things we've done to try to solve the youth vaping crisis. So, if they do that, and that might, one might say that'd be a wise business practice. If they did that, that could theoretically make this a shorter litigation than one might otherwise expect. But beyond those observations, it's just pure crystal ball speculation on my part, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any further questions? Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, Board, it's time for us to kinda discuss our thoughts after all those questions and information that was presented to us. We cannot vote during the workshop, but we can give direction that we would like to continue exploring this path of litigation, if we so choose. So, who would like to open the discussion?
I was gonna wait until everybody else goes, 'cause I always jump out.
Okay, Cheryl, okay, I'll go first. Well, first, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very enlightening. I knew it was a problem, but I didn't quite know all the ramifications and how pointed they have been at targeting our youth. I do hear from our students that it is an issue, they've taken it up for two years. I would like us to really consider moving forward with this. I think it's important. I have people calling me already concerned about their own children in our schools about vaping, and how can they help and what can they do? And so I think this kinda gives a message to our public, but also to our students that we care, and then, how do we work together? Hopefully, there is, it wouldn't be nice if it was a quick settlement, but that we move forward with this, I really would support this.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Ms. Belford, do you wanna go next?
I am inclined to encourage further exploration. I think the monetary aspect isn't really what's important to me, but I do feel like our students have really made this a priority and a focus area. I feel like what they're looking at is very much in line with what the students have been trying to achieve at the state level. And so, for that, I am, I am inclined to support exploring, moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Mr. Susan, do you wanna go next?
Sure. So, I really appreciate Ms. Belford making those questions, because that's what is out there and lying out there, and questions about, what if, are we gonna be able to recoup, what does that look like? Those are all great questions. But what this comes down to, for me, is just the core of protecting our students. And when we look back at, you know, should we, shouldn't we, it creates a paralysis by analysis. Whereas, we asked the state legislature to come forward with some kind of legislative proposals, and they're moving towards that, but that'll take years to get it perfect. I've gone out and asked our local, local governments to ban selling these things within a certain distance of the schools, with no resolve. We continue to ask others to do stuff, but in our world, we can control this. So whereas I'm kind of a, you know, those questions that we have going down the line, I am in the inclination to protect our students. They're impacting our learning environment, they're causing undue stress on our discipline, they're causing our dependence on our healthcare to possibly raise the costs in our healthcare, because of our teachers who have dependence on them are causing the cost there. And they're impacting and targeting our kids. So right now, we just had, I just had this week, a third grader in an elementary school get it from a sixth grader and have a vaping on them. It's in our elementary schools. And we looked back at what they did, they took the same people from the Marlboro, and they had them using as part of their advertising and targeting for our kids. So it's our job to protect. And I just, I think that we should do this, I think that we should set direction to possibly bring it back in a week and make a judgment.
Ms. Campbell?
So, I'm personally not a fan of lawsuits, just personally. I think I'd have to go a long way for, but when it comes to... So I had to stop and think, okay, even though person-to-person, I don't think I would ever sue someone, I think I, you know, I haven't been in that situation, I would, or actually have been in a situation and we chose not to. But this is a different sort of, this is a completely different ballgame. This is a matter of doing what's right, and there are some different ways to do it. We took our students... We took our students to Tallahassee, we asked them to make those presentations and grow awareness in our, amongst our legislators, and they very much did that. To me, this is, I agree with Ms. Belford, it's not about the amount of money we're going to get, because I don't know, when we get to the end, it may not be enough to take care of the needs that we have. It's the pressure is the influence. I would like to be a part of something that puts pressure on an organization, on a business that is specifically targeting our students, that is creating a problem that has ballooned so quickly that none of us know what to do. You know, I mean, we're trying, but you know, we, you talk about, let's create, you know, okay, no vaping in bathrooms. Well, it's not going to keep people from doing it. It's happening on our campuses on such a regular basis, and it's going to take some, I think, the pressure of litigation to create legislation. I mean, I think we, I just don't think we need to stop doing one and do the other. I think we can do it both ways. But I, you know, I would like for us to continue to look at it, because I think we need to put some pressure on a company that is, on companies that are causing problems, health problems, educational problems. We're not here to police bathrooms. Our administrators, their job is not to police bathrooms, and they're, you know, are, I believe the numbers that we were sent is that those codes, the tobacco and drug codes, and Dr. Sullivan, you can give me a thumbs up or whatever, I think they've doubled to tripled in every secondary school. Am I remembering correctly? Ms. Moore? Okay, so doubled to tripled in the last few years. That's, in the meantime, it's not that our other discipline issues have been reduced to make up for it. We're creating problems, and we talk about all the time, oh, we're suspending kids at such a too bit larger rate, we're expelling kids at too large of a rate. Well, that's not going to go down when we have these problems that have doubled and tripled. So this is not going to solve our problems in the short term, it's just, it's not. We're going to have to continue to deal with it, and our staff is working hard, and our students, I praise you so much for the efforts that you are taking on your campus personally, especially those of you who were involved last year, and I hope you will continue this year, to do those efforts, because when student voices go to students, it makes a much bigger difference than for us adults to come in and go, do you know how bad it is for you to vape? When students say, hey, this is dumb, and you should not put this in your body, it has a greater impact. So we're going to have to continue to work on this, but I like for us to continue to look at this option.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I, you know, I know we have a problem, I've seen our numbers. I have, you know, personal friends whose children have gotten wrapped up in this, and it's been very concerning. I don't like the product one bit, I don't like what it's doing, I don't like what I see in the news, I've read the links, I sat through the information. But I also see our district being asked to take on everything nowadays. You know, our core mission is to teach kids to read and write, and nowadays, we are knee-deep in security, we are over our head with mental health issues, we are concerned about scoliosis and hearing checks, and it's just, the schools have taken on so much, and now we're being asked to get into a lawsuit, which potentially could have people in our district having to sit in on conference calls. And for Ms. Moore, I have a feeling it's going to be you, and we've already asked you to, you know, coordinate now doing heart screenings, which has saved children, which is wonderful, but at some point, we're going to explode, and we don't have resources and funds to do everything that we want to do. And I think the more we spread out and try to, and now we want to be involved in a lawsuit, and like you, Ms. Campbell, lawsuits just make me extremely uncomfortable. I think there's other avenues for making change, and that's through legislation, maybe not at the state level. If they said that's, you know, it's a federal thing, then we talk to Representative Posey, you know, we move on up the line, where we can put our board resources instead of school district resources to start petitioning. I don't want it to look like I'm not supporting our students, because I appreciate the work you all have done, and traveling to Tallahassee, and trying to make changes. But I personally don't think it's the role of the school board to sue a private company, even if they're doing bad things. So fortunately, I'm one of five, and four of you want to take it a different direction. So I think we need to move forward with direction for Dr. Mullins to maybe explore with Ms. Enval. I guess an agreement is that we probably want to look at what Palm Beach did and see how that would work for our district.
We'd have to work with.
Yeah, obviously, you would have to work with the team that's moving forward.
Ms. Duskovich, if I may make a request?
Yes, Ms. Belford?
One of the reasons that I asked the questions that I asked is because I do share your concerns about putting additional demands on our team. And I think I had indicated that when we had discussed even potentially having this workshop today. So my request would be, as you move forward, Ms. Enval, for your little time left, as we move forward with this, I would like to ensure that we are minimizing impact to our staff as far as time and expense, and that we clearly delineate, in the event that we are incurring extra workload, extra expenses for things, that we are doing our best to make sure that those can be mitigated by.
And have that out clause.
Yes. Absolutely. You know, I think they've given us some, well, if you can't provide that information, we understand, that sort of thing. But I want to make sure, and Dr. Mullins, I, my other board members can agree with me or disagree with me, but I would say to you, please be very frank in what the cost is to our staff, and if it is getting to the point that it is really problematic, we either need to perhaps work to get, you know, someone temporary in to work on the things that the lawsuit is requiring, or even look at pulling out if it's getting to be too much of a burden on our staff, because I don't, I don't think any of us want that.
Mr. Susan?
I would, I would remind the board that a lot of the things that we do now are set in place to try to avoid costs and increases in the future, and I think this does that. One of the reasons that this lawsuit has the potential to do is decrease the total amount of vapings inside of our schools, the impact inside of our schools as far as the learning environment and everything else, because I wrestled with the same exact issue that you had with the cost. But then when you look at twice the amount of discipline that we had from previous years, that cost alone is a huge burden on our district, and we do so many other things preventatively ahead of them to try to avoid them, and I think that this is one of them. And that's where I came from that. So if that helps, maybe move you a little bit, Ms. Duskovich.
It doesn't. I mean, they themselves said it could be two to three years down the road, and then we'd have to figure out how to spend the money to kids that it's affecting now will be gone. The kids could be on to some new tool that we don't even know exists yet that will be on the way. It could be that they're not using Juul anymore, like a couple of kids said, and then they have to add to their claim the new company.
My third grader.
It's just, it's way out of the realm that I think that our focus needs to be, so, but, you know, I'm not going to like scream and fight you all on it. I think, you know, I understand the purpose, and I understand it's a problem, so let's just move forward.
Okay.
Everybody good? Anybody have any other questions? All right, this meeting is adjourned.